Time being six P.M. I'd like to thank you everybody for coming to the 2000, try to write the date, September 24th, 2018 Selectment Meeting is six oh one P.M. Is anybody recording the meeting?
Pre-camp.
Anybody else card in the meeting? I'm at the record reflective members present. I'll read the agenda at this time on the Consent Agenda Board of Selectment to Consider, Review, and Act Upon the Final Articles of War and Articles for the Special Town Meeting on October 15th, 2018, Discuss and Set Date for Next Special Town Meeting, Sign Warrant for November State Election as Submitted by Jacqueline Brown, Town Clerk, Approve Eagle Scout Project for Asona Bandstand, Approve Board of Selectment Minutes for September 4th, 2018, Under the Personnel Board Sign Employment Contracts for Ally Galls and Timothy McIntosh, Sign Appointment Change of Status Form for Timothy McIntosh as Submitted by Town Administrator effective September 24th, 2018, Sign Appointment Form for Ally Galls as Submitted by Town Administrator effective September 24th, 2018, Appoint Linda Fournier as Election Worker as Submitted by Jacqueline Brown effective September 24th, 2018, New Business Dates of Upcoming Board of Selectments Meeting Monday, October 1st, Special Town Meeting Monday, October 15th, Monday, November 5th, Monday, November 19th, Monday, December 3rd, Monday, December 17th, Monday, January 7th, Tuesday, January 22nd, Monday, February 4th, Tuesday, February 19th, Monday, March 4th, and Monday, March 18th. Executive Session Mass General law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 to Discuss Strategy with Respect to Collective Bargaining with Public Employees Union Local 1144 Launa, Town Hall Unit A and Free Town Police Association because an Open Meeting Law may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the Chair so declares. With that we'll go to... The Articles for Special Town Meeting dated Monday, October 15th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the Articles as written for discussion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion made and seconded to approve the Articles as written. Any discussion on that motion?
So, the only one that, as written, I don't have a problem with. The problem is that the article for the $25,000 to shred the brush over at the transfer station, I have a... I have some concerns about that article in general. I know it has to be done, but like I said, I feel the number is, A, number one, too high. I don't think we did our due diligence in looking around to try to get a solid number. That's number one. Number two, I'd rather purchase a equipment to handle that so in the future, should that ever happen again, we have the equipment not to go out and rent a company or rent equipment and then get people to do it. I think that that's just another waste of money. But that's my personal opinion and I'll turn it over to you.
So, why don't we do two motions then? That first motion is just to approve the Articles as written and so we can sign the warrant and then we'll do a second motion to recommend and we can take votes on whether we recommend and not recommend the different articles. How does that happen?
Okay, however, I make a motion that we accept as read all but the article number which, is it Article 5?
Why don't we make the two separate motions? Right now I have a motion standing to accept and as written and approve and we'll sign that and then we'll go into whether we recommend or not.
Okay. I just don't...
I'm just gonna do a separate...
I want to make sure that we just...
So it's clear.
That we just have what Charlie?
Just that we do, say we approve all the Articles except for that one and then we can just discuss.
Right, we recommend them, we're not recommending anything right now. We're just approving as written and then we'll go back and put in our recommendations, okay?
All right, fine.
All right. So, I have a motion made and seconded to approve Articles as written for the July, try again, October 15th, 2018 Special Town Meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now for recommendation, do I have enough, a motion to recommend the Articles?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we recommend the Articles. And I'll make that motion, we'll recommend the Articles as written other than Article 5 of the warrant.
And we'll vote that one separate?
So, we'll have a discussion of Article 5.
Second that.
Motion made to approve all Articles with the exception of Article 5. Any discussion on that motion here? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, let's go to Article 5. We'll read it and then we can discuss it and we have our vote. Article 5 to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $25,000 to grind the brush pile at the transfer station and/or take any action relative thereto, Submitted by Derek Macedo, Board of Health Agent, Requires Majority Vote. This is to, the explanation of the Articles, money is needed to hire contractor to grind extremely large brush pile at the transfer station. The past March storms have made the pile much larger than can be handled with a wood chipper and the previous inspection noted removal of all brush as priority. So, do I have a motion on that article for recommendation?
I'm going to make a motion that we recommend it. But we'll, the discussion of course.
I'll second the motion and we'll have discussion.
Again. I'm, I understand the necessity of having the brush grinded, but the amount, I feel we didn't do our due diligence in looking at getting prices and that's number one. And number two is I'd rather purchase a piece of equipment that can handle that for a long time to come other than just a $25,000. Get rid of this pile and let's try to do this again. Plus, I have other concerns about that, but...
To your point Lisa, we could have bought a chipper that could have handled all the smaller stuff and then only if we had the tub grind a few things, supposedly there's stuff there big enough that would fit a tub grinder and a wood chipper wouldn't handle it, which doesn't surprise me. But we, the pile we would be, tub grinding would be a lot smaller and maybe would work out the same number, but we'd have an asset to go along with it. Fortunately, that's not the way it was submitted, so... Charlie, any comments, concerns, questions?
Well, I agree that this is a problem that probably, sitting down and discussing alternatives, we can come up with a better way than just building a pile for three or four or five years, whatever it is, and then disposing it. I paced off and I rough estimated it, it's probably about 135,000 cubic feet. So, it is a very big pile.
A little bit.
And my concern right now is that we basically are a little back into the corner as to using a tub grinder and some type of a, to pick up. With that in mind, we can't remember that we're allocating $25,000. It doesn't mean that we're gonna spend $25,000.
True.
And I think between now and town meeting, we could probably get a little bit firmer figure on it, on the actual cost and then maybe we amend that town meeting on the floor, amend the sum. The other thing is that it probably is something that we, I discussed a little bit with the transfer station attendant on some of her observations and feelings about how we may be able to control this a little bit better. And, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, it's there and all of a sudden it becomes an issue. I think we could probably set up a little bit more of a policy and so forth to control the issue a little bit better than we have in the past. We have, I don't remember, I know that the town has done this in the past also. So, I concur with, you know, it's a problem that probably, you know, better managed would be less, less money. But I'm not really sure, I think that the $25,000 figure was kind of a figure to put in to get it before us, get it before the Special Town Meeting and we might be able to work a little bit better of a deal, so we say. So, you know, I'm very willing to maybe we'll give a recommendation on the floor of the town meeting. Maybe that's the best, either yea or nay at that time.
We could do that. We could hold off making a recommendation until that night.
Do you want to do that?
I think that might be a good idea.
All right. Currently, we have a motion on the floor to recommend. That motion can be either withdrawn or defeated. So, if you would like to withdraw that motion, we can do that.
I'll withdraw that motion.
To hold it over to a later date?
That's a great idea. And then we'll just make sure it's on the agenda for that night and then we'll vote on that then.
Okay. Okay. So, the motion was being withdrawn, we have no motion on that and we will leave it till a later date.
David, do we have a number with the OSHA stuff yet?
We currently have approximately $30,000 in potential OSHA issues that need to be addressed. We're still waiting on a couple others, so I'm not sure if that number is gonna be the final number or, you know, the numbers we've gotten, we've gotten from the individual departments. So, we're, like I said, we actually live, associate tomorrow on the Highway Department on their, the exhaust system that he's gonna be potentially installing there in order to exhaust the fumes out of the garage. So, we're waiting for a quote on that.
So, I knew that this was gonna, I knew this was gonna grow.
David, with this figure, I did think, I guess, how firm are these department heads on what they feel the cost is? Any idea?
Well, the numbers that I have have all been provided to me by the individual departments.
Okay.
So, that's where I'm at. You know, I haven't, you know, sat down and talked to, for example, the Highway Department about, you know, the specific, you know, numbers that he's recommending there to bring those issues into compliance. So, I'm assuming that he has contacted the vendors and understands, you know, the nature of the work and that it's appropriately priced.
Okay. I, just one, my concern right now is, you know, is the ventilation, the ventilation system or some type of a ventilation system is appropriate? I'm just wondering if that, like, an item like that might be better put off until the annual town meeting.
Yeah, I think what, what I'd like to see is a list of priority.
Right.
You know, like, things that we have to get done immediately and things that may be able to be put off into some sort of capital program. Because I think like, I don't know, like outlets, okay? We talked about this before, do we need plugs in all the outlets? You know what I mean? Like, or do we need new outlets? I mean, we talked about the little stuff to get us through. I mean, at one point, we were talking between eight and $10,000 and now I'm looking at a $30,000 number and I don't even know what that includes.
Well, from the Highway Department, it's an exhaust system.
Did you send this out?
I haven't sent this out yet. This is us calculating out what the cost would be. Eye wash system, oil spill container, fire extinguisher signage, he needs electrical work to bring it up to code, water sewer, they need first aid kit, fire extinguisher, fire extinguisher holder, Tyvek coveralls, masks, triangle warning kit, road flares, part of hotment station needs the exhaust. And this, this number here, I'm not sure if this is the number, we're using the same number that Chuck had recommended for $5,000. I'm not sure if that's the number and we really won't know until tomorrow. And then just in the town hall, $1,000 for fire pro cabin, ladder and a first aid kit.
Now, these, where do you call the requirements? Is this from the audit that?
The, the Highway Department, from the Highway Department, she specifically went over there. She said the police and fire generally are OSHA compliant just by virtue of the fact of the nature of the work that they do. More of the OSHA issues deal with the Highway Department, so she did go and conduct a survey of the Highway Department. I also have sent out an informational survey to each of the departments to list what types of activities they do and whether there's a potential for, you know, spilling products or, you know, there's a checklist identifying, you know, potentially OSHA-related activities. And I got all of those back. This is what was called out of those surveys and this is what's been called out of the loss control survey that she conducted.
We have a budget that we, or a line item that we used to use a while ago. It still probably has funding in there for little projects that along the way, like we did the carpet, we did, so is there any money in that line item that can be used towards this?
Well, we have the capital facilities, so we, you know, we have money, just a little bit of money in there that can be used towards, you know, doing some of this work that needs to be done.
Okay. Going through the list, okay, I, there is a couple, a lot of them are kind of minor things. The eye wash system is going to have to be plumbed.
Yeah, we put $1,500 into that.
So, that's where there's a little chunk of money there. Well, you know, I think we confirm between now and town meeting, we can firm it up a little bit more.
Yeah, 'cause it has no number on it.
Right. I'm thinking the exhaust system is probably gonna be something that's gonna need some heavy investigation more than just an estimate of what it is, is what, to what extent we need the ventilation, you know. I know that the ventilation system they're talking about in the fire station is, you know, it's a whole different can of worms, so to speak, I think than basically in a repair garage. And so, we should look, I think, at what the type of system is before we get too involved in it.
Yeah, the fire station, they live there.
Right.
They're running the trucks. It's not a repair situation when they bring it in and if they have to run it, they can put a hose on it and put the hose outside.
Right, exactly.
You know, it's a lot different than the two situations.
I envision, I don't know, I don't know the plans for the exhaust system at Station 3, but in general, it's a system where you...
And that's got...
That's $47,000.
Right.
But that's coming, that's going on the grant.
Yeah.
Exactly. But that's...
But that just gives you a marker.
In that system, you hook the tube, so to speak, up to the exhaust and you drive the truck in and it sits there. When you drive the truck out, you stop the truck up, you pull away, the system automatically comes out, plucks it all through the ceiling.
Yeah.
So, it's...
I mean, most repair garages, they have, basically, it's a hose that runs outside.
Right.
You know, it's plumbed per, you either have a plon that's plumbed permanently in the wall that you hook up to with the vents outside, or you have one like we used to have at the gas station that we hooked up and ran outside, but...
Yeah, like, this shouldn't be like a wish list of things that I wish I had?
No, but...
This should be, this should be directed, you know, according to whatever the OSHA guidelines are.
Right.
And prioritized from that.
'Cause if we put something in that doesn't meet OSHA, then we're just spending wasted money.
Right, right. I agree.
We do have to meet OSHA by, what's it, February 1st?
February 1st.
So, we won't have another town meeting before that except for the police station and I don't know if we want to conflate things on the police station.
No.
So, this is our, right at the apple, I'm told. We would put anything off to the spring, it's gonna be something that can wait till the spring, not something we're gonna be not in compliance and be getting fined.
Actually, the one thing, in talking to the loss control person, she's had a lot of discussions with the state and the states administering OSHA on behalf of the feds. And what she's hearing more than anything else in terms of these kind of things, she's hearing from them that they just, the key piece that they want to see implemented is training of the employees. They don't want people, they want all kinds of training, you know, on, you know, chainsaws, on using grinders, on, you know, proper lifting, that's the thing that they're looking for. They're saying that the OSHA people want people trained and we have a program that we can use for MIA that we can do that.
Is that in that budget or is that something in my office?
Actually, the MIA is all, are all free.
All free, 'cause it's an insurance.
And in reading the, the, I want to say the state law, it's, the state will, will be administering to the OSHA standards and in the documented, it said, we're out, that they were out to identify the areas and give counseling. They're not gonna be coming in and starting citations.
Right.
I mean, citations may be down the line if, you know...
Yeah, usually no, you don't address somebody, you're gonna get, yeah.
Exactly, that's the point. That's where I...
The biggest danger is that if there's something that's missing and somebody gets injured and that could come back at the town and say, well, gee, you, you know, you didn't have the proper type of equipment or it wasn't, you didn't train the person how to do this and as a result, they got hurt. That's when, you know, I'm sure OSHA would take exception to the, you know, I don't think they're gonna, they're coming out to search everybody's building to find out what's in compliance and what's not in compliance, but it's more, like I said, from what I understood from the loss control woman, they're in contact with them every day, it's training. They want training, training, training and they want the things that need, like an eye wash in the garage, that's common sense. You know, a plumbed eye wash so, you know, nobody gets hurt and there's material in their eyes that can, you know, at least, you know, head off a potential disaster.
They're gonna want to see MSDS sheets for all the different departments and all that stuff too.
Yeah.
That's not something that's, that's...
That's a file cabinet.
We do up in, in housing, so it's not a problem. Any other questions, any other issue, any other articles?
No.
So, we voted the Articles, next is discuss and set date for special, the next Special Town Meeting. I'm assuming this is meeting, the November Town Meeting for the police station?
Yes.
I don't personally want to see a date until it comes from the building committee.
That's exactly what I said.
So...
So, just so to bring everybody up to speed, the, we have four informational meetings set, two for weeknights and two for Saturdays and the meeting dates are 10-3, 10-6, 10-17, and 10-20. The 10-3 and 10-17 are 7:00 P.M. and the 10-6 and 10-20 are at 1:00 P.M. And they're all at Aponequik? They're all at Aponequik.
All at Aponequik, okay.
In that little auditorium, well, not little, but in that, in that front auditorium room. So, so, through the chair, Monday, October 1st, we have a Selectment Meeting. Maybe we could just make that on 10-3 so we don't have to come out twice that week?
That is a Wednesday?
Yeah.
I think you have variances on that date.
Have we set that though?
I don't know if they've been, Derek's not, you know, out today, I don't know if he's noticed.
Okay, that's fine.
I believe the police chief would like to be before us, the first...
On 10-1?
On 10-1.
Okay, all right, we'll leave it.
I don't think he's gonna be here on 10-3.
Okay.
He'll be on vacation.
I just...
Yeah, I know.
These are, well, we checked with Aponequik and we checked with Andy, so those are the dateset.
You'll have AV available, so you can have AV booked up and do the whole thing?
He wants to meet with the AV people beforehand, just to double check, so...
He mentioned that to me today also, have a dry run before he actually does it.
And we really should have a building committee meeting because we need to discuss the number as well.
Right.
You know, it's not my decision what the number is, it's a, it's a building committee decision. They make a recommendation to the Board of Selectment and then we go from there. So, we really should have one before that anyway, so...
Should probably have a full committee and then also a subcommittee. Maybe the full committee leaves and we can finish with the subcommittee.
Yeah.
Just because there's gonna be questions about what you're doing with the old building, not you, but the committee's doing with the old building, so...
Okay.
That way, we can kill two birds with one stone.
Okay. Like, this is coming up quick now?
It goes fast at the end, doesn't it?
It's crazy.
Do we have a date that the general, that the general contractor bids will be in by?
15th.
The 15th.
15th. The subs are due on the 28th.
There's no statutory deadline that says we have to meet, we have to have it to meeting within 30 days or anything like that that I'm aware of, so...
Yeah, no, no, no.
There's a language in the, in the contract that says that the bids have to be held until such time that the board appropriates the money, basically.
So, I don't want to rush, I want to have the number, I want to have, so all the questions can be answered.
I agree. And, you know, we all have to be on the same page because I don't know what the Finance Committee's recommendation's gonna be. So, I think that the Building Committee and the Board of Selectment all have to be on the same page, so...
Are you gonna invite the Finance Committee to that Building Committee meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, why don't we do that?
Okay.
So, that way, they can hear it as we hear it and there's no...
So, when do you want to do that? Before 10-3? 'Cause that's next week.
10-3 is next Wednesday, right?
Right, so 10-1?
10-1 is the Selectment Meeting.
Right, so maybe right after it?
What's the agenda look like on 10-1, I would do?
Just those variances and the chief's gonna come for you for something, another personnel matter, I can't remember what the other one, Charlie, what was the personnel matter?
There'll be, the fire chief's gonna come, we're going to have the topic of increasing call pay. At the beginning, three years, he and I have come with a proposal, the call and I're good with, and so it'll just be basically discussing the, that, that increase.
Okay.
So, if the agenda stays like, we'll keep the 10-1 agenda light and then you can have, you know, she'd have enough time. Unless you, second, I have a plan in mind, I was gonna say unless you want to do the second and then, it'd be meetings first, second, and third, but if you did the second, it'd give you enough time to do the full meeting, full board meeting, a subcommittee meeting and meet with them all at the same time.
Then Andy can play the video for everybody too. All right. All right, I'll check with Andy tomorrow and see if he can meet on 10-2. Are you good with 10-2?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just go ahead.
Yeah, I know. It's gonna be a non-unique.
Okay.
Yeah, I know.
So, why don't we look at that, the schedule, if that works for everybody?
All right.
That agenda, that, well, that's gonna be a building committee, so I'll have to set agenda for that.
Right, so Tim, you can, you can send that out tomorrow to Taylor, all right?
To your brother?
Yeah, just to make sure that he's available on 10-2. Taylor, Andy. All right, perfect.
Eagle Scout...
And the Building Committee, sorry.
I'm sorry.
And FinCon, mm-hmm, okay.
Full building.
Yeah.
Okay, all set. Approve Eagle Scout Project for Asona Bandstand. Come on down, introduce yourself, please.
I have a handout. Thank you.
You have those awesome hair.
And your name?
Ethan Fagan.
Ethan Fagan?
F A H E Y.
Feel free to have a seat, you don't have to stand up, look informal.
All right. All right, so, basically, I'm in Boy Scouts, I'm a member of Troop 26 in Lakeville. I live in Lakeville, I live in East Free Town, but I'm just part of the Lakeville Troop. And I wanna, I'm working on my Eagle Scout right now and I want to do a service project regarding the Asona Bandstand, that area down there. And so, originally, I wanted to do something with the bandstand, but the Historical Society, they said that they wanted a, they wanted the base of it sloped so rainwater would run off of it, but I can't, like, it would take like, they want an actual mason to do that in order to actually do that, like, it would be beyond my ability. So, I've looked at other things that I can do in the area and I've listed a couple down on the paper. The, probably the biggest one is the fence around the area. There's a, there's a bunch of boards, I went down there today and looked at them that are like either rotten or cracked and I, I wanted to replace those and then repaint the entire fence. And then, one of the things that the Historical Society recommended that I do in addition to that, the walkways in the park, the grass is growing over top of them and they want me to push back the grass and also roots growing up under the walkways to, the roots growing under the walkways, it's... up under the walkways to, the roots growing under the walkways, it's causing the walkways to rise up and they want me to spray paint those with, like the, whatever the reflective paint is there to, so nobody trips on them or anything like that. In addition to that, I want to either get donated or build like four park benches and then put them around the park here and there. And I also wanted to plant flowers between the front fence and the curb. There's a, a picture on the second page and you can see where I mean, right between like the parking area and then the fence, like along there between the two walkways where I intended for this to go. And then obviously mulch and landscape fabric underneath that. And then the town sign, I wanted to touch that up. It's not painted right now, but I thought that maybe I could paint that and also mulch with, add some mulch with the flowers that are already there. And then possibly get a weather vane for the bandstand if I can get the money donated to purchase one or have somebody make it. One of my mother's friend's husbands, he's a teacher at Bristol Plymouth for their welding, their welding program. And they said that, she said that they take projects like the weather vane and they'll build whatever it is and I would only have to pay for the materials and then all the work that they do is all free. So that seems like my best option for that at the moment.
And your park benches, what are you thinking about for park benches?
What, what do you mean?
Is this something you want to have, try to build, something you want to try to have built, something you want to buy?
I'd like to see if, the first thing I'd like to see is if I could get them donated from somewhere, just the park benches as is and then work down from there. Either get money donated to then buy the park benches or if that doesn't fall through, then to build them myself.
I'll tell you what, I'll donate the four park benches. So that's one less thing you have to work on. What was that?
Okay, thank you.
I'd be more than happy to, to, on the weather vane, let's just, even the materials or, or, or buying the weather vane.
Yeah, why don't you submit your bills to us and, and then we'll take care of them for you between the three of us?
Just all, all of theirs.
Not five thousand dollars.
No, no, it's not going to be five thousand.
But, you know, we would like to help you. I was, I was going to suggest, I mean, we can do what you suggested, but I was going to suggest holding off until the annual town meeting and getting the, the resin ones from, and put them on a warrant article because I think those might have to be, I'm afraid that, I'm not saying they would disappear.
Yes, they'd have to be staked down somehow or permanently.
The Park and Recreation Magazine that I get from school has the really nice ones that, that are resin, that'll probably last a lot longer. So I mean, we can go down that road or we, I, we could wait till the annual town meeting and put them as a warrant article.
Okay.
Whatever way you want to do it.
Well, I was just looking at, that way it doesn't cost the town. I think I wouldn't mind donating if it's four park benches, that's, you know, somewhat reasonable, like you said, not five thousand dollars.
No, 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 not, not the fancy, but someone, something that could be put there in the class.
Maybe some wood broadiron type deal or, or, let me see, aluminum, forged aluminum type deal.
Yeah.
But it would have to be, to Lisa's point, it'd have to be something we could secure so they're not, they don't disappear.
Well, you get those concrete ones, you get those concrete ones with the hens that are just made of concrete and then boys run through it.
Yeah, but those are kind of, I was thinking something a little-
We also have to-
This kid's going to do all this work. I don't think we need the rest of the DEP to-
No, but-
Well, that's his next job. He's only, he puts his job that patient in when he turns eighteen.
Whatever you do, you need to make sure that we keep the historical society involved and Mary Brown. So whatever benches we're thinking of needs to probably be approved by them as well.
I, yeah, I've talked to her with different things about this. I haven't, we haven't talked specifically about the benches, like what kind of benches I would get, but she thought that benches, if I can recall from our last conversation, she said that the benches wouldn't be a bad idea.
We had visited down there on the site with Mary. Mary had come down with us and we'd taken, basically walked around the park. The other thing you might want to consider is that prison services like Waffle, they make like benches, like I've actually bought them for town hall and stuff like that. They're solid wood, I mean, really durable. That belongs, I bought in Nuxford, I believe, is still in the town hall and in the lobby, so.
You could probably check with Naomi from Bristol County to see if they still do that. But, I mean, Bob's willing to do whatever is necessary.
We'll figure something, it'll be easy now. We'll figure something out.
You want to work on the weather vane? I got your number, yeah.
Make sure it's solid brass.
Gold plated, at least, on the park bench.
Anything else you'd like to point out, Ethan?
I, I think that's about it.
Beautiful.
Nice job. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
And helping us out.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve to allow Ethan to do the work he outlined in his submission.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made and seconded by someone. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the board of selectmen's minutes from September fourth, 2018.
And I'll send that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the board of selectmen's meetings from September fourth, 2018. I wasn't there, so I abstained. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentionist, myself.
We skipped the sign warrant for, you know, for the state election.
We did. That would be a no-no.
Yes.
Yeah, I already have. Um, sign a warrant, the November state election is submitted by Jacqueline Brown. We all received copies of that via email. Any questions or concerns about the ballot, the way it was submitted?
None.
So I'll see a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to sign the warrant as submitted by Jacqueline Brown. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And, is there something else? No. Personnel board.
All right. First item is sign employment contracts for Alexandria Galtz and Timothy McIntosh. I believe both of them didn't afford you. On, on Ali, it's basically two percent pay raise and, basically about it.
I'll make a motion to approve with discussion, please.
Okay, nation, made-
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Oh, oh, no, motion with discussion.
Yeah, I want to discuss, yeah.
It was a motion made and seconded.
Just, just a thought. I know that we're doing her, her sick leave, not her sick leave, her health on her base and we're paying out there. I wouldn't mind, because it's not really a lot of money, putting her longevity on top of that too. So the seven hundred longevity plus the twelve, go on, you know what I mean?
Until the base?
Yeah, and get rid of longevity. Because it doesn't do anything, it could just, you know what I mean? Like it just, I don't know. That's just a suggestion from me.
I don't have any issue with that. It's, yes, it's-
It's peanuts.
Right.
I don't have a problem with that. I don't, I'm not sure if, I don't want to negotiate in open session with, with Ellie. I don't know if that's okay with her or not. So-
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So you're going to amend your motion to include that?
Yes, I'll amend, I'll amend the motion to, to move the seven hundred dollar longevity, get rid of longevity in our contract stating the same way we state with the twelve hundred that's on the top of our base and that she gets paid that way.
Include it in there.
Right.
I'll make, I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded and I won't get carried away here, but, now, any other further discussion? No further discussion. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
You better get the hang of it. You only got six months, Charlie, and it's all yours, so.
I know, but like I say, sometimes I get carried away.
You're moving up to the J. diversity in six months.
Okay, that being, then is the contract for Timothy McIntosh.
So I don't, I didn't get an email, so I don't know what's going on.
There was a question about the, if you don't mind, Charlie, I'll speak to, because I'm the one that, broke up, I saw the email. I don't know if it was sent to me as the board of, board chair by mistake and not personnel board. I don't know how it flowed, but at four thirty, we got an email just questioning his performance and whether the, the union would have an issue with the job title. I believe, David, you've reached out to the union president and spoke to him about it?
I did. I spoke to Kevin on Friday morning and he was all in favor of what we were planning to do and had no objection on the part of the union.
So it seems the union is not going to object by, about his job title and the difference between what he's doing now and what he's going to be doing in his new job. And that was the only concern that the attorney had. Like I said, I don't know why it came to me and not to Charlie, but I got a feeling because he sent the board, the chair, chairman of the board, the full board instead of the personnel chair.
Can we get that in writing from the union? Do you have that in writing?
I don't have it.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
Verbal discussion.
Verbal, okay. So I'll make a motion to approve Tim's contract as written while we secure a letter from the union stating that they have no opposition.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next would be change of status for Timothy McIntosh effective September twenty-four, 2015.
Where that was a contingency, do you want to, I'll, I'll make a motion to sign it with the same contingent that we have as stated in the motion above. As soon as we get the letter from, of non-opposition from the union, we can sign that and-
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion made, pardon, a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? No. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item would be the same for Alexandria Galtz in the-
I'll make a motion to sign her appointment form.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Last item is the appointment of Linda Fornia as an election worker submitted by Jacqueline Brown effective September twenty-fourth, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that closes that out.
Okay, and new businesses, we have the dates for our next selectmen's meetings as spread earlier, with possible exception of October second, which actually won't be the selectmen's meeting, it'll be a building committee meeting. Executive session, master general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respective collective bargaining with the public employees union, local one-one-four-four Launa Town Hall Unit A and Free Town Police Association, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position the public parties so declares and we will not be returning into public domain to open session. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Joe's, yes. We are in executive session.